I'll call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, April 16, 2015. The time is seven o'clock. I'd ask you to please call the roll.
President, results.
Here.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
I believe Village Attorney Morris will be joining us.
Yes.
Also President Village, Claire Kaylee.
We have a quorum. If you'd please rise for your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening to everyone here with us and everyone watching at home. If you are here with us this evening and you would like to address the board at any time, I just ask that you please be recognized by the President and make your comments from the podium so that everyone can see and hear what you had to say at home. First up this evening, our presentations and public comment. We have a few items from our Chief of Police, Mr. Weitzel.
Good evening, Mr. President, Trustees, and Manager Francis. I have two recognitions tonight. The first one is for one of my employees, Lieutenant Bill Gutcheck. Bill, if you could come up, stand next to me. He was nominated, I'm going to tell you a little bit of background on this, he was nominated for an, what's called, an ESGR Patriot Award by one of my patrolmen, Officer Mike Panic, who is a military veteran. Mike isn't here right now, but, I mean, Mike is a current, he's a Gunners' Mate Petty Officer, First Class. His position in the Navy was Naval Experimental Dive Unit. He was seven years in the Navy, seven years in the Navy Reserve. He's attached to Naval Station Great Lakes, home of the only boot camp in the United States known as Recruit Training Command. That's Officer Panic, who nominated Lieutenant Gutcheck for this award. What this award is, is the, the ESGR is a component of the Department of Defense that assists municipalities throughout the United States in managing their employees that are military veterans, such as to comply with federal guidelines on how we must treat our federal employee, military personnel, arrange scheduling for them, assure that they can meet the requirements they have to the military. And a great component of that is scheduling, especially for smaller municipality police departments. Many law enforcement agencies have military personnel on their staff now, from our veterans that are returning home, that are either in the military police or have military experience and make very good police officer candidates. So, for the last, at least 10 years, Lieutenant Gutcheck has handled all the scheduling for the department, whether that be sworn officer or civilian employees. And when Officer Panic was hired, we voluntarily contacted the ESGR and set up a program where Lieutenant Gutcheck could schedule Mike so that he can make his commitments that he has to the military. It can be difficult at times because we have a small department and only have a certain amount of personnel. Needless to say, it is a federal guideline, but the organization is set up to make it easier for us. So, Mike, Officer Panic, on his own accord, asked me if it would be all right if he nominated Bill for this award some time ago. So, here, Mike, you can come up. This is Officer Mike Panic. So, he, he took it upon himself to nominate Lieutenant Gutcheck for the Patriot Award. I'd like to read the award and then may, have Officer, Officer Panic and Lieutenant Gutcheck could come up to the podium and answer any questions or speak to it. But I will read the award that is being presented, and it's really on behalf of the government, but it's also on behalf of Officer Mike Panic. It says, the award reads, "Officer, or Office of the Secretary of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve recognizes Bill Gutcheck, Riverside Police Department, as a patriotic employer for contributing to the national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting the employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force." It's signed by two very high-ranking personnel that I can't read their signatures. But, so, I, I am going to step aside, have Mike, if he wants to say a few words, and Lieutenant Gutcheck come up. But it really just, this is just a recognition for an employee that does all the work, able to make Officer Panic meet his requirement. And I will tell you that when Mike was at, was in the, he doesn't like to talk about this, but when he was in the Navy before he came to us, that little phrase that I read you about his, one of his positions of the Naval Experiment Diving Unit, what he did, a part of his responsibilities, was to train dolphins to mine our ports for terrorists and other governments that would want to harm our ships that are in ports, both our ports and foreign ports. And these dolphins would go in and check the bottom of our ships and the ports to make sure that they would not blow up our vessels and hurt our military personnel. A very specialized part of the Navy, and I'm glad, I mean, Mike really still does some of that. Travels sometimes to San Diego, out at Coronado, if any of you have been out there, you know they have a military base there. And still does some of the training when it comes to training dolphins for the mining of our ports. So with that, I'll step aside. I'd first like to congratulate Bill on receiving this award. I will present it to him, and I will have, Mike, did you want to say a few words before Lieutenant Gutcheck? Go ahead.
Hello, evening. The Chief really explained on what the meaning of the award is, you know, we, as a reservist, it is nice to have an employer that supports what I have to do, especially since my unit, I'm in a diving unit, and our, our job changes a lot. Sometimes we are asked to do certain things that aren't necessarily on a specific weekend that all reservists would be on, so we'd move it during the week. And even when I go on my two weeks, it, sometimes it gets changed or canceled depending on what kind of diving we need to do. And the Lieutenant's always very fair and accommodating with me and helping me, you know, support the Navy as well as the village, so, just a thank you.
Got a couple of things I want to say that mean a lot to me. First, having Mike part of the Navy Reserve is just an incredible thing. A lot of the guys here kid around and sit there and say, "Oh, Mike's on his military vacation." Oh, again, they're all Satan jesting, a lot of fun and things like that, but it's much, much more than that. First, thank you very much for nominating me for this, but I, I'm proud to support the reserves and, but you need to know a little story that I have to tell you here that, that means a lot about the reserves. And the story I'm about to tell you about is a gentleman named Robert Copeland, okay? Copeland served on a small destroyer escort called the Samuel B. Roberts. In October 1944, the Roberts and other destroyers threw themselves against four battleships, six heavy cruisers, and many other ships of the Japanese Navy. This was the height of World War II. It was called the Battle of Samar. This Japanese far, powerful fleet was sent to destroy the American force that was based at Lady Gulf at the time. This battle lasted for several hours, and the Roberts was ultimately destroyed during this battle. Three other destroyers and two light carriers were also destroyed. Over 1,500 men were killed during this battle. Men were only, not only killed by the battle, but afterwards, when they ended up in the water, many were killed by sharks that were in the area, which is a very terrible thing. But because of the sailors of the Samuel B. Roberts and the men aboard other vessels, the American task force was, they were spared, and the, our then enemy was defeated, they were turned away. So, we ask, what does Robert Copeland have to do with today's award? Okay? Robert Copeland was a lawyer, just the same as a lot of other people, just a hard-working soul, and he joined the United States Navy Reserve. He did that to serve his country. Robert Copeland was the commander of the Roberts, he was the skipper, and he took his ship against overwhelming odds and deterred the enemy away from its objective. There were many reserve officers in the Navy during this period of time. Gunners' Mate First Class, Panic, right here, our Officer Panic, is our Navy Reserve. Mike, along with thousands of other good service people, served our country and would gladly, would gladly go into battle headlong without even giving it a second thought. And our country is free because of reservists and the military. Robert Copeland fortunately survived and became a rear admiral after the war. So, me getting this award, I'm just one small part of this great big picture that makes our country free. Myself, many other employers, employers throughout the country that work hard to sit there and allow our reservists to, to do what they do, and that's what keeps our country free. And for that, Mike, I thank you.
Can I ask you something?
Of course, please.
I would like to say, Lieutenant Gutcheck, thank you very much for all of your service to Riverside, and I'm always delighted to hear about our police officers. I think we have such a fine force, and thank you very much. And Officer Panic, the Chief read us your vitae of your accomplishments, and I cannot believe you do not look old enough to appear. But thank you very much for your service as well.
We do have several other veterans that are on our department too, so, military veterans, so I'm very proud of that. Thank you. Mr. President, I would like to go on to the next recognition. I would ask that John Passarella step up next to me. I asked John to come to tonight's board meeting some months ago to honor him for his work with the Riverside Police Department for an excess of 12 years. John will be retiring at the end of this school year from his current position. I don't think he's retiring permanently from another venture, whatever that may take him in his life. But before I get into presenting our plaque patch, John, I would like to read you a little bit about him and to tell you why I, I asked him to appear. I'll give you a little bit of background on John. He's a graduate of Proviso East in 1976, although you probably want me to forget the years, right? He's a graduate of Southern Illinois University of Carbondale with a bachelor in arts, in arts for art education. While teaching at Lindrop School, he went back to school and got his master's degree in administration from Lewis University in Romierville. His employment history includes, this is a summary, first year out of college, he substitute teach at District 89, which is Melrose Park, Maywood, and Broadview. Taught art at Lindrop School, K through 8, in Broadview for 18 years. Was assistant principal for one year at Worth Junior High School, grade 6 through 8. One year as principal at Worth Elementary School, K through 5. One year principal at Kamaraq School in North Riverside, K through 8, and 12 years at Riverside Brookfield High School. His current position is assistant principal of Student Affairs. And through different superintendents at the high school, John, in his position, had been the liaison to the police department, even back in the days when I was a road sergeant. And from the get-go, John would deal with the police department in not only criminal matters, but in social matters, meaning he would ask us to assist him with different events at the school, help in counseling situations, get help for kids if needed. He was always available. I can tell you that my officers that are here can vouch that they have his cell number and his home number. There were many times John came out in the middle of the night because of an incident at the high school. It could be something with damage, it could have been water damage, it could have been a criminal act, it could have been, we just needed him to make a decision for something that happened on their property at 2:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning. He always answered his phone, and he always came as requested by my personnel. There isn't a single person on this police department that has not personally worked with John Passarella in some aspect of their duties in assisting the school in whatever the school might need us for. And like I said, he was a very compassionate person. It's not just law enforcement. There were many times that my officers assisted John, and he assisted us with just putting kids on the right path, getting them the help they need, and assisting them with parent issues. So for that reason, I asked him to come, and I wanted to present the Riverside Police Department's plaque patch. And I'm going to have John step up when I'm done. His family's here, the current principal for RB is here, I believe, and, yes, there she is. And I would like to present this, I'll give you the box, John, when we're done, but it is our new patch plaque. But I'd like to read the back. It's dated today, April 16, 2015. It says, "John, for, this plaque is for your service to the Riverside Police Department as liaison from Riverside Brookfield High School. It is greatly appreciated. You will be greatly missed." Tom Weitzel, Chief of Police, and I would like to present this to John and ask him to step up and accept this and speak to the board. Thank you for all of your...
To begin with, I would like to thank Chief Weitzel and the Riverside Police Department and the Village of Riverside. A few years ago, when I submitted my letter for retirement, I didn't kind of plan on the emotions that would be attached to that letter. Those calls in the middle of the night, my family can attest to, going, "Really? Where are you going?" And I realize that whenever you go onto a scene with fire trucks and police, you don't get to zoom around the cars and the trucks just because you're the assistant principal. As I was told by certain law enforcement, I thought I had to get there quickly. And so you learn a lot about that. Over the 12 years, I want to thank the Village of Riverside for the quality law enforcement agents you've had on staff. I too have seen them grow over the 12 years, and the departments, the depth of the department and the role it plays at Riverside Brookfield High School. It is so far beyond simply ticketing and, you know, coming by and dealing with violations and citations, as, as the Chief has noted. The many conversations I have had with our two dispatch that I'm, I'm accustomed to speaking to, and it's been a wonderful experience. Some of it I can share, some of it I'll share after July 1st when I retire, so Sergeant Lowery firsthand cannot hold it against me because there's been some practical jokes on the police department's behalf that I was a victim of, which I'll be speaking to the village later about. The Chief will deny it, but I have proof. The, the school needs the law enforcement component to it, not for safety. It's so far beyond that. It's to create balance, it's to create warmth and a security that at a high school can be difficult to attain. The officers, Officer Cairo, who began my journey with me, I say, and I remember when we began canine searches, you know, and there was a cultural, "Oh, my gosh," and he did it with such kid gloves, and then transitioned in the role he played constantly. And then Sergeant, now Sergeant Coder, taking over that responsibility and taking that to the next level, and then unfortunately, in our world, the lockdowns and intruder drills that are a part of our staple diet. As Sergeant, Chief said, I have not had, I have had the fortunate opportunity to have contact with all of the officers, and you have a wonderful force, and it goes well beyond this. But I really do have to thank my family. It's, you sometimes pay a heavy price on your journey, and that happens sometimes and you don't realize it until you're there. But it's been a wonderful 12 years, and I will greatly miss the, the interaction with the police department and the staff. It's been, it's been wonderful, and, and I know, as I leave RB, that our, our students and our community needs, and our students and our staff are in great hands. They're not there to enforce, they're there to educate and with, when needed, with compassion and dignity to, to deal with the issues that some students have difficulty making. So I greatly appreciate this, and I will treasure this for a lifetime, so I thank you.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes, I just wanted to say, before Mr. Passarella left, as a father of a student at RB, I, and I know other people on the board have had students at RB, and I'll have two more students at RB in the near future. It's a wonderful school, it's a great school. It is one of the main reasons that Riverside is such a great community, is because of our public high school, and Mr. Passarella and others like him are the reason, along with the students. We have outstanding students at that school, outstanding administrators, outstanding teachers, and I really appreciate having a place like RB for my children here, here in Riverside. So thank you very much for your service and everyone else at RB. Thank you.
What else? Well, it's after presentations like that that I guess we can realize what it means to say Riverside's finest and the kind of depth and commitment we have for the people who serve us. Thank you, John. Chief Weitzel, did you want to say a few words about the passing of Chief Hall?
It's fitting that I briefed the board on, and I know John Passarella was close to George Hall too. This past week, Brookfield Zoo's Police Chief, George Hall, passed away. He was 66 years old. And he was a close friend of mine for 33 years. Probably the first three years, he wasn't a close friend because he was a very taskmaster-type person. But I started at the Brookfield Zoo as a seasonal police officer in 1982. You probably couldn't run that program anymore where you give 21-year-olds a gun with very little training. But I worked there from, a seasonal from May through September, and then I went to work at that time at Oak Park Hospital, and then was hired, the zoo, back in the early 80s, they shared a list with the Village of Brookfield, if you can imagine that, or the police. I was pulled to the zoo and asked if I would come on full-time, which I did, and I worked full-time at the Brookfield Zoo Police Department before I came to Riverside, and many people don't even know that the police department exists. The zoo actually does have a fully certified law enforcement agency through the Illinois Law Enforcement Training Standards Board. And when George hired me, I was hired with two other employees at that time. Both of those employees became police chiefs. And he said to us, "Gentlemen, you can't work at the family-oriented zoo unless you can deal with our customers and our patrons that come to the zoo, so you better learn to be people-friendly." And back then, when there was no union protection, if you didn't live up to their standards, they fired you. And I saw them do that, and they let people go. So I got a lot of my training early on from George. He was very demanding that his personnel know how to treat and interact with the paying customers that were coming with their families to visit the zoo. And over the years, as I grew up in the department here and went through the ranks, he constantly kept in touch. And when I became a administrative level, Lieutenant Deputy Chief and Chief, we became very close, sharing information and talking about different issues in law enforcement. And if you recently read the Landmark article on his passing, you will see that he, he mentored many officers, and that list, the, the Landmark could have printed a list a full page long of law enforcement supervisors throughout the state of Illinois, that either our sergeants, lieutenants, deputy chief commanders and chiefs that started their careers at the Brookfield Zoo. He was a fantastic mentor, and he demanded excellence, and he got it. But yet he was able to maintain a friendship and a professional dealing with him. So, just this past week, I talked to the director of the zoo, and they will be doing some type of ceremony, remembrance for Chief Hall when the weather gets warmer at the zoo for his professional friends and colleagues that worked at the zoo. So, I spoke to his wife this week, Diane Hall, and expressed my condolences, but right now, they're going to keep things private for about the next month or so, and then they'll do a public type of ceremony over at the zoo in the future. But I just wanted to let the board know that because he was very, we assist the zoo a lot on different events, but usually, you know, if they have protests for animal rights type things, or they need extra personnel. And, and George never expected anything free. He always reimbursed us for our services. So, and as you know, we, they get part of their commission from us, and they get part of their commission from the Village of Brookfield. But I just thought it'd be fitting to let the board know that, at least as far as law enforcement goes, and my officers know him and his staff very well too. He was a genuine good guy.
Thank you, Chief. I, I would encourage everyone who hasn't, hasn't read the reports in the Landmark Suburban Life to take a look. I mean, the list of the people that Chief Hall mentored is extraordinary, and, and I guess it reminds me of the men that we've honored here tonight, too, the ripple effect of a life well-lived, so he will be, he will be missed. Thank you, Chief. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Mr. Cariello, you're in the front, please welcome back. Long time no see.
We'll see if you're welcoming. We'll see if you're welcoming me back after I'm finished. Nicholas J. Cariello, 354 Lino Road, Riverside. Before I get started, I understand that trustees, this is one of the last meetings for trustee Sussman. I personally want to thank you for all your good work, effort, time you contributed to the village, all your services to the village. Over the, over the years, trustee Sussman and I had many discussions, more debates, et cetera, et cetera, mainly on zoning matters. In the debates, I always seemed to end up on the short end of the final decisions made. Again, I'd like to personally thank you for your time and for the service to the village over these past eight years. I have several comments on past issues. Bike trail. Last year, the village gave $30,000 towards a bike trail located on a 16-foot state right of way of First Avenue. Trustee Ballerine, would you agree or disagree that this $30,000 could now have been better used towards the upkeep of our parks, trees, and public areas?
If, if I can interject, Mr. Cariello, the public comment is an opportunity for you to address the board, but we, the trustees will not be answering questions.
I figured I wouldn't get no answers.
Well, you figured correctly.
But I directed it, I'm going to direct it. I have a question, if I may, I have a question to legal counsel.
Again, you're welcome to ask it, but he's not going to engage in debate this evening.
Okay. The question is, is the village responsible for the liability of this bike trail as the school is within a residential zone? That was my question. I don't expect an answer. The $2.5 million street improvement bond issue, bond referendum, has supposedly... The $2.5 million street improvement bond issue, bond referendum, has supposedly a net of $2.3 million. I have a question to the village manager, which will not be answered, but here's the question. Will there be a public accounting of the used $200,000, and what fund is the street bond money in? Lionel Road is the only access to the village from Ogden Avenue, and is highly traveled. It needs immediate attention, crack filling, et cetera, et cetera. In 1993, the Lionel Road homeowners were assessed for five years for a new street sewer and water. I have a question to President Sells, which he will not answer. Will the village again let Lionel Road be unreparable, and again possibly assess Lionel homeowners for a new Lionel Road? Five years back, I had a meeting with our village manager, our village attorney, chief building inspector, and of course, trustee Sussman. We had an hour and a half discussion and debate on three zoning issues, one of which is how and why would the village change how yards were measured? Yards, front side and rear yards are now measured from the eve line to the lot line. 359 Lionel Road was purchased and a major expansion, interior and exterior is in progress, with an investment of towards a half a million dollars. I was going to ask trustee Foley, because he's the president of Melbridge Development, Inc., a builder, should the village measure the side yard of 359 Lionel Road from the eve's line to the lot line as per newer's code, or from the building to the lot line as originally measured when built in 1954? I know an answer by trustee Foley has many implications. Again, I'd like to thank you, trustee Sussman.
Thank you, Mr. Cariello.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Spatney?
Well, you get Nick and I on the same night. I haven't been here in a long time, right? It's like old home, Donald Spatney, 111 Woodside. Couple things popped up, so I'd like to say, I'm sorry John Passerella isn't here. I know personally, a lot of great things that guys have done for individual students at the school. I wish he was here. I'd like to thank him again. He really is a person they're going to really miss there, and, you know, he deserves a lot of credit for what he's done. It's gone far beyond what most people do. Second thing, madam, I didn't know that it was you were demising here, but, and we've had our arguments, and we've had our fun, but I want to tell you, you were okay, and you were a square shooter, and, you know, what the hell, right? Okay, time marches on. I came tonight, not to ask questions, but to, this is my wont to do. And I was down in Florida for a couple of weeks at Lonny's apartment, huh? Great. And I came back and I went in the library to return my books, and lo and behold, I saw the landmark, which I always look for, and there was this thing on the front cover called "Nothing to Do with the Swan Pond Till 2016." And under the picture, it says, "Rainwater Pools in Front of the Drainage Culvert in Swan Pond Park." That is not rainwater, that's river water. It comes in through that pipe I keep asking you people to fix. You know, you shouldn't have let them done it. You voted unanimously, time and time and time again, to let the Corps do what they thought, and it was all BS, right? See, I calmed down a little bit, I said BS. I mean, that job was a travesty. We cut elms, American elms, beautiful elms. I tried to ransom the trees from you people. You know, we cut them so that they could grade that crap, and look what they did. Look what they did. You go out there right now, the water is at the same level as the river. The pressure is on the riverside. Even in Cook County, river, water seeks its own level. It flows in the pipe. It is not, that is not rainwater sitting there, it's the water that comes through. I had a fisherman measurement, and I've told you this guy endlessly, you know, he stuck his finger in there. It's a half-inch by 18-inch, it's like an 8-inch pipe. It's 24/7, it's pumping water in. It will always be level with the river. When the river rises over the pipe, the park will be flooded. That's it. There's no if, and, or but. You don't have to pay Christopher Burke $30,000 or $50,000 to tell you this, you know, it's free. I'll tell you. I've measured it, I've dropped grass on it, the water flows in. Many of you know this, many of you I have argued with for how many years, right? Remember when the Corps came here, they said, "The first thing we're going to do is, we're going to build a berm along the river. We're going to cut all the trees along the river. We're going to remove all man-made objects in the river." And the board voted unanimously, some of you still here, unanimously every time to let these fools do this. You know, the Army Corps is to engineer what the Department of Prisons' medical system is to, you know. These people tell you, death tax is state tax, you know, it's a difference in thing. It's all what they've told you, and this park has been ruined by these people, and you guys have let them do it, and now you need to fix it. Not make excuses, not we don't have the money, not we don't have the time, not we don't have the interest, we're going to build concrete over on Burlington. No, we need to fix this park and do it right. Now, when I hammered and hammered and hammered and asked you guys to get Anderson to go up there and fix the thing, and to your credit, you did that, and Anderson did it, and he raised it, one block, you know, this much, and it hasn't been a flood since, and there is no water has flooded into the park except through the pipe that you allowed, and that goofy, terrible-looking culvert that you've allowed the Army Corps to build there. And until you stuff that thing, or bury it, or tear it out, you will always have water in this park every time the river rises. If it rains in Wisconsin, the 750-square-mile, you know, drainage area of the Displanes River will send water down. They will go over the pipe, and water will go in the pipe. Now, if you drill, if you dig a hole in front of where that culvert is, you don't need to regrade it. You can live with what they did. You need to take down that earth that slid over to the side, and that was undercut by the water coming in. You know, no one has ever seen a piece of land move like that, right? The water came in underneath, sliced it, and it turned it 90 degrees. That's how that piece moved. Now, if you will just simply dig a sump box, bury an 8-by-12-inch concrete box six feet deep, bury it down there and put in an electric pump that goes on, just like people have in their basements, now, when there's enough, and run out a couple of lines underneath, then it'll drain the whole thing, and every time you get water in the park, the pump will throw it over the top into the river, and you'll have the use of the park, you know, almost all the time, almost all the time. But if, as long as you leave this pipe there and this goofy culvert, you will always have the same situation, and it cuts out four or five months of the year, cracked up the park. And that's the answer, and you don't need to ask Christopher Burke. And I've been telling you this for years and years and years, and broader people in, and Richard Ray, and all kinds of other people came and said the same thing, you know, and I don't know what it takes. When I read this and the stuff about, you know, we can't do this, and it's too hard, and Riverside ponders how to reserve damage, there's nothing to ponder. The answer is there. If you took a dump truck out in half an hour and dumped a load of gravel in front of that thing, there wouldn't be any more water flow in. That'd be the end of it. Now, it's ugly. You let the Corps go down there this last year and dump all that ugly white stone on the bank, I mean, what is that? What is that? I ask anybody. Anybody going to want to answer? Why did you let them do that? I mean, do you dump 6-inch mixed road base into a public park in this town? Why did you let them do that? Come on! I'm just, I'm incensed at this. I donated a bunch of trees, and nobody raps them, and they're going to knock them down. I mean, you know, what the hell is going on here? Attention detail, the devil's in the details. That's what Frank Lloyd Wright always said, right? And his rough slate. But this is an atrocity. This is terrible. And, you know, I haven't got many more years to come here and moan, you know, and I want to see this park fixed. Now, if you had Anderson come down to the corner and fix the corner at the bottom of the path, just like he did upriver, he could do that. That kid is pretty good with that broken concrete, and have him put that in, and that'll finish up that corner. You could do this for peanuts, you know, and then you've got to block or bury that culvert, and you need to put a mechanical device in that when you have water, it clicks on, and like everybody's basement sump pump, right? You all know how that works. Foley, you know how it works, right? You could do it, right? Wouldn't be hard. If you can't do it, Anderson can do it, you know, somebody can do it. Why are we fooling with this thing? I mean, it's years, it goes on for years, and you guys say, "Oh, an excuse," and shit, you know, admit it, you botched it. I mean, not you guys, boards before, right? And boards for eons before let big trees grow out of the wall. I mean, there were 10-inch trees they thought that were growing in that wall. I mean, this has never been cared for, but it should be. Bob Upus here, he says it's the crown jewel, and it is the crown jewel. You know, the big part of Riverside was never built, it was on the other side of the river. The great design that Olmsted has on all your maps, he gives awards to people, you know, that was never built, right? That was on the McCormick property. And so, when you look at the map, you see just this little tiny thing that's called Long Common, you know, it looks like your little finger, you know, and you see that big map with the two bridges across the river and all that. Well, it was never built, so Riverside was never built. But this is here, and it deserves to be respected, and it deserves to be cared for, and I just find it atrocious that nobody, and it's not just you guys going back, takes care of this, because this is really something nice, and nobody else has got anything like this. You know, people come here to see the streets and the trees, they don't come to see the CBD and some concrete and benches and crap that we're going to get. But this is what's Riverside, and it's important, so please, take care of this, and please, close that damn pipe, and then you'll, all you got to do is have the guys go and dump some stuff in there, close it, just like I asked you to do with the valve. I asked you to test what would happen to the river by opening the valve up there. Nobody would do it. I came and said, "Well, you got a valve there, all you got to do is open it, it's a diversion, you could find out the results of, before you cut the dam." Well, nobody'd listen, right? This, you can stop it. You know, a guy could do it, I mean, one truckload, two, he can do it in a half hour, and then you'll see that no more water will come in. You got to pump it out, of course, but bury a sump box, put a couple lines out to gather the water, right? It's simple. I mean, this is nothing, right? You don't have to pay all this engineering and crap, and have all these excuses to go on for years and years and years, okay? Thank you. I really feel strongly about this park, because it used to be beautiful. I could walk down there at night. Now, we got signs, you can't go in the park at 9:30, you know, I don't know what that's about, right? Nobody's stopping me from going in that park, I want to tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatney. Anyone else like to address the board?
Anybody got any questions?
Next up are the reports of village officers, and my report is first, and unfortunately, Mr. Spatney just walked out at the door, so he's not going to get to hear this, but this week, manager Francis, members of the Public Works Department, and Orion Galy, our village engineer, did in fact tour Swan Pond with an eye toward finding exactly the kind of repairs that Mr. Spatney just referred to. None of us are pleased with the condition of Swan Pond, certainly not me. The plan moving forward is that we are going to consider this during our 2016 capital improvement plan. We're going to be presented with various options by our village engineer, from converting it into a natural wetlands area, which would be one option. Another option would be to consider the kind of manual or electric mechanical pump that Mr. Spatney just referred to, and the benefits and the costs relative to that. We're also going to be talking about the life cycle of the asphalt path that is currently there, whether that is something that the board moving forward is going to want to consider. So, these are all issues for which we make no excuses, and we will be considering the responsible solutions, given the resources that we have, and also considering the kind of available grant funding we might be able to get. But it is my sincere hope that we can restore Swan Pond to its past splendor. I'm sorry, Mr. Spatney didn't get to hear that response.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So, I take it that the Army Corps is completely done, washed their hands, walked away from the job?
Yes. Yes, they have. I mean, what Mr. Spatney just said about the lifting of the section of grass isn't quite accurate. Really, what moved that section of grass was that extraordinary ice storm that we had a couple of years ago. The Army Corps' position is now that they have covered in and restabilized the bank there, and that's another thing that we're going to be talking about, is how to get rid of that white, glaring white stone that is there, and how to make that more aesthetically pleasing. The Army Corps' position is that the planting, the plantings that they did will over time naturally expand, and that the water retention capacity of the plants that they put in will be enough to dry that area out. That remains to be seen, and that's something that our engineer is investigating, and that will be a report that will be made to this board when we start considering the CIP in July. So, we are going to be confronting this directly. So, in a somewhat more benign mode, since we are talking nature, I do have a presidential proclamation to read this evening regarding Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of topsoil by wind and water, purify the air and water by reducing pollution, and create plant and wildlife diversity, and whereas trees have been shown to reduce crime, increase property values, reduce heating and cooling costs, and conserve energy use, and whereas trees can beautify our parks, our streets, improve the quality of our urban environment, and carry on the tradition planned by the inventive vision of Frederick Law Olmsted, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Benjamin Sells, village president, proclaim the day of April 25th, 2015, is Arbor Day in the village of Riverside, and I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the protection and care of trees within our community and our woodlands. In connection with Arbor Day, as you go around the business district, in fact, there's one right out here in front of Township Hall, if you'll look for tags on the trees, our village forester has put a number of tags on various trees throughout the village with information on the tags, talking about the tree, the cost of the tree to the village, the amount of stormwater that a given tree might pick up, and there's a lot of great information on there. You can learn a lot more about trees by the work of our village forester. Mr. Collins will also be planting a tree in Swan Pond to celebrate Arbor Day on Saturday, April 25th, in conjunction with the Olmsted Society Landscape Work Day and the Riverside Brookfield High School Day of Service, and all are welcome to participate in the work day and to attend the tree planting. I would also like to congratulate our village forester, and the many volunteers from groups like Floss, our own commission, our Landscape Advisory Commission, Riverside Springs Ahead, and the many individuals who go out to take care of our triangles and our parks, that in March, for the 10th year running, Riverside was named again a Tree City USA. So, with that in mind, I would encourage people to go out, take a look at our new nature area over in Indian Gardens, walk the new path that's over there, get back and enjoy the wonderful natural environment that we have. And in conclusion, I would just note that April 22nd is also Earth Day, so we have a nice little string of days coming up here when we can pay attention to the planet that makes everything possible. And that is all I had this evening. And in conclusion, I would just note that April 22nd is also Earth Day. So we have a nice little string of days coming up here when we can pay attention to the planets that makes everything possible. And that is all I had this evening. Next is our village manager.
I just have one item. I just wanted to remind the residents that the final winter farmers market will take place on Wednesday, May 6th, from 2:30 to 6:30. And then thereafter, then we'll obviously notify residents of our regular weekly farmers market, which will begin, I believe, in June.
Anything else regarding our reports? No? Of course, of course, please.
Yeah, we haven't talked at all. I'm sure everybody's just waiting for this, about the Riverside Arts Weekend, and it's spring here, and the Riverside Arts Weekend is scheduled this year for the 16th and 17th of May, which is really just around the corner. It is, as I think most people know, a combination of juried art, performances, food, activities for kids, and some special, what do we call it? A spectacle. And I can't talk about it because Kathy Haley or somebody else would have to lock me up for the next month. But if people will remember, there was a yarn bomb last year, and this year's spectacle, Joe, I can't tell you either, is going to be much bigger and much better. So we hope everybody will stay tuned for that. And I want to thank everybody in the, in this room, and then people from the village who have really contributed to making it a success over the years, and we could still, and there's Scott, too. We could still use some volunteers as a new trustee that weekend. So please sign up. It's online. And I think that's it, but it should be a lot of fun.
It will indeed. I mean, I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned that. There have been several allusions tonight. So for those of you watching or here who don't know what we're talking about, this is the, the last full meeting that Trustee Foley and Trustee Sussman will be sitting up here. On May 7th, we do have the changing of the guard. Our new trustees, Trustee Scott Lumson, who is here in the audience with us tonight, and Trustee Mike Sedevy-elect will be sworn in. Mr. Ballerine was also reelected on April 7th. Congratulations, Mr. Ballerine. We're glad to have you back. So that'll be our next meeting. We will be changing out the guards, and we'll have a lot of nice things to say about some very wonderful people. So we're looking forward to that. So it is not your demise. And to echo what Mr. Spatney said, I remember what Barack Obama said to Hillary Clinton. You're likable enough.
Is that damned by February? Is that what that means?
So next up this evening is the approval of the consent agenda. Do any trustees need any items removed for further discussion? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton, second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Sure. Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons, and we have a report from Chief Weitzel, the annual police department report. Chief Weitzel.
Yes, Mr. President, trustees, and Manager Francis, I, my last item in front of the board tonight is our annual report. I'd like to start off by saying that the annual report, this entire document, is put together by my administrative assistant, Pamela McCall. What she does is she collects information throughout the year, and then the officers that have certain responsibilities have a date to submit their data to her, and she puts it all together in the report that's in front of you. And she, her belief is not to give you just a whole booklet full of stats. So she likes to make it a little more colorful and a little bit more easy to read because her, because she, when she approached me, she said that people don't like to read an 18-page document full of numbers. So what you see in front of you here is her design, with my approval, but I really don't have to prove, approve it because she really runs the department. I don't. So, at least administratively. I, I hit some highlights, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have. The report will be available tomorrow on our website, or at least very shortly after. Tomorrow, we'll post it up on the website. I've already distributed to the local newspapers, the library, and it's in, available in the lobbies. We had over 14,000 calls for service this year. That's, means that the police had to respond to some type of event. It could be very minor, from a loose dog to a serious crime. We had over 13,000 phone calls, administrative phone calls that came into the 911 center, and that's addition to the almost 3,000 911 phone calls that come in every year. This year, the Explorer Unit went to the National Conference in Indiana. They did not receive any awards, but we were able to bring our young men and women there to participate in the national event. Officer Brian Greenenwald accompanied them. Overall, crime is down 9.8%, like I reported to the board earlier. We had 65 juvenile cases this year that actually worked their way through the court system in some manner or another. Most of them were alcohol-related, or at least the highest percentage. Those would fall under the category of local ordinances for either possession of alcohol by minor or consumption. We try to stay away from giving those minor offenses a criminal status so that juveniles don't get criminal records. Two far, 2014, you should remember the guy that used to work here, Bill Legg, retired. I still miss Bill, although he does come in once in a while. We changed our patch in 2014. 135 DUI arrests in 2014. Majority of those arrests are made on the midnight shift. Our intensified traffic enforcement alone, just intensified enforcement, had 108 citations issued in 2014, and that's the program where residents call, email, and ask us, could you concentrate on this street? Could you concentrate on this street? Most of the time, it's where they live, the schools. Could you concentrate on this? Could we have the portable speed sign? So that, that program itself is, is separate than the number of citations the department issued this year. The parking citations were down, and the moving violations were up for 2014. Those fluctuate every year depending on staff and how much time we can put, resources we can put towards specific traffic details. We had 100% compliance, once again, with our tobacco enforcement, which is fully funded by a grant. We received a IDA grant for the 10th year of running. And we had over 3,000 hours of training this year. That, that is either in-service training at roll call, or training where we actually send officers outside the village to participate in, in longer training periods. We did have some out-of-state travel training, and most of the out-of-state travel training at the patrolman or sergeant's level was funded by a grant or reimbursed by a grant. And it really was an overall good year for the department with a new officer coming on, Tammy Prime, with Bill Legg taking his retirement promotions happened during the year, and people had a chance to move up and take new, new responsibilities. So if there's any questions I can answer for the board, or any highlights you'd like me to go over that I didn't, I would be happy to do that. If not, I will be making the report. Hopefully, I'll have the village manager's administrative assistant, he'll flash that out in the next couple of days, but it already is available at the library.
Trustees?
The coyote sightings are way down. Do you think that's because there are fewer coyotes or are people just not reporting it?
I think, I think it was due to the training we had, but it also is people, I believe that biggest significant drop is that people weren't reporting as much because it, it went from 300 and something down to 66, was it? So there was less, a dramatic 82% drop in the coyote sightings. So I do believe people became more educated from that program, and my officers certainly became more educated. They've actually used the air horn a couple of times, and not, not the air horn on the squad, the actual athletic-type air horns that we bought that the expert told us would help us. In many cases, it did. They scampered away. So I do believe, I do believe though, some, somewhere along the line, residents are not reporting as probably as much. I believe there's probably more than 66 sightings, but I don't believe that they call the police department on those.
Other questions? Thank you always for a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Next up are ordinances and resolutions. First, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning January 2014, ending, ending December 31, 2014, for various additional expenditures and revenues. Finance Director Solinas.
Good evening. Coming before the board is an ordinance to amend the 2014 budget, primarily in the general fund. It amends the budget for various revenue and expenditure line items, including the amendment necessary for the interfund transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund of $1.42 million. Despite the various expenditure amendments, revenues did actually exceed expectations by approximately 5.8%. For 2014, revenues were budgeted at 8.6 million. Actual, excuse me, actual revenues totaled 9.1 million. Had it not been for the transfer of the 1.42 million in 2014, the general fund would have seen a surplus of approximately $330,000. And the passage of the ordinance ensures that all 2014 expenditures are or will have been within legal authority. Included with the ordinance is an exhibit, Exhibit A, that details by line item every account that needs to be amended. So I will entertain any questions that the board might have concerning that, that exhibit.
Before we continue with the discussion, why don't we get a motion and a second to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Mr. Foley. Now, any questions or discussion about the amendments? For Mr. Solinas? No? Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like you answered them all.
All right, thank you.
And you may call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Motion carries. And now a subject that's dear to our hearts, second only to concrete, signs.
You know, we had so many emotional things earlier that I was hoping to talk about either signs or concrete.
Yeah, because it just completes the...
You know, Mike and I can talk about concrete as a final conversation. Anytime.
I asked Jessica, if you guys do talk about it, to text me. I will leave the dinner table, sorry Karen, and get over here and talk about it right away with you guys.
I'll come over just to counter whatever he says. It's fine.
See, they get unruly the last meeting. You can't, you can't do anything with them. So what we have before us is an ordinance amending Section 414 and various sections in Title IV, Building Regulations, Chapter 3, Signs of the Village Code. And what, what this really is, is a, a complete reworking of the, the early, earlier ordinances that we had spent a great deal of time talking about. And this, the effort was primarily a drafting effort, and I want to commend Director Abt and Village Attorney Mars for doing a really fine job on, on putting this together in what I think is a very readable and intuitive way to follow it. So would you just like to present it, and then we'll get a motion and a second before we discuss it?
All righty.
Director Abt.
Where we left it off was we had an ordinance that failed to get approved, and I was directed by the village board to take a look at the sign ordinance as a whole and try to eliminate any conflicts, make clarifications, and try to make the ordinance a little bit more user-friendly as a whole document, as well as incorporate the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations along with the removal of the amortization schedule. So what you have before you is that new sign ordinance as a whole that includes the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations. It has the amortization schedule removed, and so now we just have regulations for how to deal with non-conforming signs. So anybody that has a non-conforming sign will have to abide by the non-conforming sign section, and that applies village-wide now because there's no need to separate out something different for B2 since there is no amortization schedule. We included a table in there for the B1 and the B2 to try to make it a little bit easier to understand what signage was allowed. And like I said, we kind of went through and tried to eliminate duplicates and any sort of inconsistencies that there was there, since there were prohibited signs here, prohibited signs, prohibited signs here. We tried to make sure that we condensed things as much as possible to make it easier to read and, and not have problems where there would be conflicts. So that is the ordinance that you have before you. Staff obviously recommends approval of what we have presented to you, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have or any clarifications.
And just, just, just as, as in addition to what Director Abt just said, we, it should be noted for the folks who are listening that, that our primary focus with, with this revision has been the B2.
Yes, it has been mostly focused on the B2.
And so in, in months to come, we will be revisiting then the B1 section so that we can bring that into consistency and conformity with what we're, what we're doing here with regard to B2. So first, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sussman. Second by Mr. Pollock. Questions and comments and debate.
I have a comment.
Please.
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to say that I put off reading this in my board because I thought, oh, I don't want to do this again. It was like a breath of fresh air, Sonia. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It was like a whole different, well, it was, a whole different...
Once you looked at the clean one, right?
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, it, it's just, it was so different from what we had before. So thank you for the time and effort you put into it. I think it was very well worth it.
Thank you, trustee. Further comments?
What did we do about the combustibility?
We have, we still have it in there. What we have is a reference to our adopted building code. The adopted building code that we have is the 2006 International Building Code, and in there, there is a whole appendix about signs and acceptable materials. So that is, we reference that in our construction requirements, and in there, it does make allowances for specific types of plastics, acrylics that are used in signage, and so it would follow whatever those requirements are.
And/or any wood-type signs.
Right. For the most part, wood signs would not be permitted. We did make an exception for the pylon signs.
So you're not allowing blade signs to be manufactured out of any sort of wood material?
That would be correct unless we can get the fire department to say that it's okay, which most likely they would not. So...
Other comments?
But that will be their call.
Mr. Pollock?
Yes. You'll recall that, that the last time we talked about this, I'd made several motions trying to get this approved, and what's presented is consistent with one of the motions I had made at that time, and also consistent with, I think, the board's direction at the previous meeting. As I said before, and I just wanted once again to go on the record with this, I strongly prefer that we amortize the non-conforming signs, but as we all know from our last discussion, that's not doable. There's not enough support for that on the board. And so, given that, I think it's acceptable to grandfather the signs as, as proposed in this ordinance. In other words, make them all, all the non-conforming signs, legal non-conforming signs. I think that's, it's a fair compromise. It gets done the vast majority of what the planning commission had recommended, maybe not as quickly, but nonetheless, it represents progress and a step forward, I think, for the village. I did have some specific questions, and I apologize to staff. Usually I try to get these questions to them ahead of time, but I just never was able to quite get that done this week. Couple of things in the ordinance I wanted to emphasize, and then a couple of questions as well. In Section 436A regarding maintenance of signs, it specifically states that the replacement of or changes in sign faces require permit. I just wanted to emphasize that, that's, I think that's very important, and, and staff will be administering the ordinance in that fashion in the future. Comment and kind of a question on, on the graphics in the sign ordinance. It's on page 13 of the Red Line version. Just wondering if staff could do better graphics.
Yeah, I'm struggling with my, my computer, and so I'm back into an XP version that does not allow me to do a whole lot of editing. So I'm hoping to get that cleaned up before things get codified to make that a little...
Very good. And that, that's a change that could be made without going back to the board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Then the section under non-conforming signs, it's very specific. I just wanted to give a comment that, that people, you know, existing non-conforming signs can remain, but they cannot be enlarged or substantially altered if they're in disrepair beyond 50% of their value. Is that correct? Then they have to be replaced.
Right, and brought into conformance at that time.
Right, and brought into conformance. So I think that's very, very important. And finally, on, it's on page 19 of the Red Line version, I'm sorry. And finally, it's on page 19 of the redline version, I'm sorry, page 22 of the redline version, in paragraph three regarding sign placement, it says, "No sign shall be erected or placed so as to cover or extend across the architectural elements of the building, et cetera." There's also another section in the code that says that if the staff has any concern or question or an interpretation, that they don't have to approve it at the staff level, that you could submit that to the planning commission?
Yes.
For their review. I would suggest, this is just a comment, that the staff initially at least take a very strict interpretation of that, and so that the planning commission can then begin to kind of set the parameters for what that means, when it says, you know, that it can't cover or extend across architectural elements. I think that's the, that's my preferred method of kind of setting the parameters for what that means, is to submit a few of those to the board if there's any question, or to the planning commission if there's any question at all, and then you can begin to get some idea, and then hopefully not have to submit it to the planning commission after that.
Sounds good.
Otherwise, I, again, I support this. I think it's a fair compromise. I think it represents progress for the village board, and I thank village staff very much for the hard work they did in getting this back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Further comments? Ms. Sussman?
I'd also like to thank Sonia and Michael for their work on this, and Sonia, for your time today. She spent over an hour with me. I think she was thinking it's the last time ever, so she was willing to do that. But I also as...
Until your demise.
Until my demise. Thanks. I think we'll just abandon that expression for now. And like Doug, I would have preferred the grandfathering in of the signs. I do think that this is a very, very good compromise, and I think that this is a very good way of moving us toward, toward actually underlying and maintaining the character of the village. I appreciate all the time that people, not only staff, but people on this board spent talking and compromising. I think that the document allows us to maintain our character, it allows us to move forward. We had heard several businesses talk about the kinds of things that they want to see in the code, and I think Sonia and Michael, you've done a very good job of incorporating that, such as the blade signs. I think that, as Doug said, the non-conforming part is very, very tightly written, and I'm also appreciative of that. And I think the conversation, I think you started it at our meeting, that about, Pat, about using a carrot. Sometimes it's a heavier carrot, sometimes it's a lighter weight carrot, of using our staff to actually go and start talking to businesses about where we're moving forward as a community. I think that was a very helpful comment, and I know that staff has been out, quote-unquote, "on the streets" talking to businesses, and I would appreciate, and I know that that will continue. So I'm very happy with this. I think this is great. I think it's really tightly written, and thank you. Thank you.
Other comments?
I also appreciate all the work that you've done on this. I just had a couple small comments. Under Section 4-3-9, Section C talks about painted signs. It requires that signs be repainted every four years, or if they're peeling or flaking, whichever occurs first. Do we have to have people repaint them every four years if there's nothing the matter with the sign? Is my question. I just want, don't want to cause businesses to do something if there's really no.
It's more of an issue than disrepair, right?
Right.
Pardon me?
It would be more of an issue if it was in disrepair.
Right, if it's peeling or flaking, absolutely, it needs to be repainted, but to just say they have to do it every four years, I would just ask if that could be changed.
How would you handle that from a drafting standpoint, Mr. Mars?
This was existing language, if I recall, and I assume that the repainting is just to freshen it up, so fading sign or fading paint wouldn't necessarily be flaking or cracking, but I assume that when this was first drafted, that the idea was to keep everything looking new and fresh.
I mean, it's not a big thing, it's just...
If we wanted to strike the years and just leave it peeling or flaking, then we could add the word faded or something like that to address...
I would add the word faded.
So then, in instances where there was peeling, flaking, or, you know, a determination that a sign was looking a little ragged, we could...
Something like that. I would just prefer that, rather than making them painted every four years.
Sure.
So you're suggesting then to strike every four years thereafter, and just make it read, must be repainted at such time as fading, peeling?
Right, peeling, flaking, or fading occurs.
Is that acceptable to everyone?
Fine, okay.
Okay.
And the only other thing that I had...
Got that, Mr. Mars?
I do.
The only other thing I had was, page 32 of the redline, it refers to, under subsection small II, "A canopy or awning sign shall only be allowed in instances where a wall sign would negatively impact the character of the building." Yet then in Section 4A, it talks about canopy and awning signs may constitute a primary sign. So is it only if?
Yeah, so if you do have to, if you do get the privilege of having it as your primary sign, then these are the rules for it. So it would only be in those instances, you know, like I said, where you would be covering up an architectural element, that then you would be able to have the awning sign as your primary sign.
Is there a reason why we don't want to allow them as a primary sign typically?
I think that was just how it was previously written, and the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't seem to have any direction that that needed to change. So I think the preference, as the Planning and Zoning Commission was talking, was that we wanted to push people to wall signs as much as possible, but that, you know, you can't necessarily do that in all instances, so. You know, I think of the building at Forest and East, and you have all that little brickwork on the corner that a lot of people might not want to do, a wall sign covering up that detailed, you know, decorative brickwork there. That's why you have mostly window signs and awning signs.
So basically, they could just say that they feel it negatively impacts the character, and then they could have the canopy sign? Okay.
Yep.
I just, I do have two questions relating to our conversation this afternoon, to see if, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Michael. One has to do with the window coverage. Remember?
Yes.
Yeah. My question was that in one place, it says that you can have, this is again for the B2, have up to 25 square feet of coverage for a window, but in another part, it says you can have no more than 20 percent coverage. You can have up to 25 square feet, but you can have no more than 25 percent coverage, 20, 20 percent coverage, and that includes temporary signs as well, with the exception of the grocery stores. And that could be, I could see where that would be a conflict, and I, that was one of the questions I had.
So we had proposed that possibly we add the wording, so this is, we're going to be on page 30 of the clean version.
Sorry.
20 of the clean version.
Page 20 of the clean version.
Oh, sorry, 20 of the...
And then page 23, which is the table.
20 of the clean version. And so it says letter B, and it says, "Area of all temporary and permanent signs," and that's the area that she's talking about that could possibly be conflict with what you're allowed for permanent window signs as your primary sign.
So you could have a small window where the coverage is 25 square feet, and that would be more than 20 percent.
More than 20 percent, right.
So what we said is, that we would add is, when temporary signs are utilized, then the combined area of all temporary and permanent signs in any one window shall not exceed that 20 percent. So that way, if there is a primary sign, permanent sign on the window, that already takes up more than 20 percent of the window, they would not be then allowed to have a temporary sign on that particular window. They'd have to put it on a different window.
Okay, and then the second question I...
Does that answer it?
Yes, that answers the question.
Is that okay with everyone?
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, okay.
And the second question I had, Sonia had to do with the appeals process and the use of the word "may."
We did not get to that one before the sub- clock bell rang.
So the question I had was on page 42 of the new version, of the clean version, not the redline version. And it says, it's H, capital letter H, and so this is the appeals process. So one of the things I really like about this is how it has expedited the whole process of businesses applying for signs. Instead of having to go to the zoning and planning commission, the business owner goes directly to the community development director. And then if there's an appeal, it goes to the planning and zoning commission.
They want a variation, they have to go to the...
They want a variation, excuse me. And then H says, "After recommendation by the planning and zoning commission, the board of trustees may, by ordinance, approve, not approve, do nothing." And I wondered, Michael, if the "may" is correct, or if we're really requiring that the board vote on something, whether it's to deny it, or affirm it, or whatever. But it's the use of word, yeah, the use of word "may" made me wonder if...
Yeah, the "may" there is just suggesting the fact that there's, they have to choose one of those alternatives.
So how about "shall" instead of "may"?
Yeah. That works.
I have all these yellow, little yellow marks, I could keep going for a while, but I won't. Those were the two substantive ones I wanted to bring up again. Thank you.
Since, since we're right there, though, right, right above that, on three, G3, because I just saw this. It says, "The Planning and Zoning Commission may, in its discretion, require that the applicant seek review before the preservation commission for signs on properties with historically significant structures." That's required in any of it, isn't it? Isn't that under the, any historical structure, a sign on a historical structure would have to go before the preservation anyway?
In the B2 now?
Yes.
Still in B2?
Yeah.
I think this, this might imply a little broader than actually designated landmark properties. So, I mean, I think that would be the primary one, historically significant structures, and I think maybe that this was built in originally because, when we did the variation process, because it was asked specifically that there be a cross-reference, so people would know that they have to go to preservation.
So historically significant structure is not equivalent to landmark structure?
I mean, it, we could change it to that, but I, but I think someone could argue that...
Well, no, if, if, yeah, I was gonna say...
Right, I think it's intended to be broader.
Yeah, and that's, in that case, it makes, it works.
Okay.
But it's, but, but, because under the...
If it is a landmark building, I do believe you have to go to...
Right, landmark, you would definitely have to, but I think this allows additional...
Right, okay. That sounds good. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Again, yes, Mr. Pollock?
There's nothing in the ordinance about ownership of signs. And I bring this up, I brought it up to you before the meeting, and I want to get it out in public, that it concerns me that some of these signs in town aren't owned by the business owners, they're owned by the people that own the building. And some of the signs that are on these buildings that are owned by the building owner are owned by a gentleman that really doesn't really care to take care of his properties. It concerns me that if something were to happen to these signs, and though I appreciate all the work that's been done on this and the grandfathering and all that, that's great, but if the sign does fall down, it's up to the landlord now. It's his sign. The business owner can ask the landlord, can, hey, can you put my sign back up? But if it's a non-conforming sign, then we have to go through this whole process. I'm worried about enforcement of this, and I, and I'm worried about ownership of the sign, and who technically owns it. If the, if the landlord does not allow the tenant to make improvements to his building to facilitate a new electrical supply to a sign, what is the business owner to do? I think that this ordinance is fine now. It's a little lengthy. We've gone from, in 2005, from five pages to 42 pages of the code. We're a village that is struggling to get businesses to come to town, and I think, and I'll say it one last time, because then we'll hear one more time, that this ordinance has to be enforced, more than it was in 2005. It's kind of why we're here, is because of non-enforcement, and having so many non-compliant signs follow us all the way to April of 2015. So if we can find out the true owners, so when a person fills out an application for a sign, do you own the sign? Or is the sign part of the building that you are renting, and is it owned by your landlord? I think is important. It really is. Because if you're going to be enforcing this, are you enforcing it to the business owner, or are you enforcing it to the tenant?
I think ultimately, it always falls on the property owner, and then he can take it up with...
And the property owner could tell you, hey, you know what, it's my tenant's problem, take it up with him.
So, I think legally, though, that's where it comes down to.
So I, I think I'd like to see something along the lines of who we're dealing with in the ownership of these signs. I think it's important.
That's certainly something I can add to the sign application, and have it be something that they disclose as to, you know, whether the sign is leased from the property owner, or if they have ownership over it.
And, and all permitting of any work to be done on these signs, you know, has to be by the book.
Is that, is that an issue that you have seen addressed in other villages in terms of ownership, in terms of it being on an application or something like that?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we can certainly put on the application, who's, who's going to be the responsible party for this sign? How can we contact you if there are issues? And that should help.
So, yeah. Mr. Pollak?
Well, Attorney Mars can comment on this, but ultimately, it's always the property owner's responsibility. I mean, if a tenant is in violation of the code, it's the property owner's responsibility to bring in the code, and if they say they'll take it up with the tenant, well, guess what? We'll see you in court, Mr. Property Owner. Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't, we never knew those words in the past. We never had any teeth to the ordinance, and I hope that we do going forward. And I think it's important that if you look at some of these non-compliant signs, look at the buildings that they're hanging on, all right? I have more of a problem with the building than I do the sign. And this is why we're here. We're trying to say that these signs, for some reason, don't appeal to us. I have more of a problem with the building that the sign is hanging on, that doesn't appeal to me. Fix the building, and the, and the sign will disappear. I'm more interested in the enforcement of that, but it's tied to the sign thing now. So, and, and back to the ownership thing. You know, I, I want a clean sign hung on a clean building.
I want to say that Sonia has proven herself that she is following up on things like that.
And I know she is. I think that's great.
And perhaps we should all show our teeth right now, because we're willing to enforce this, I think.
Well, we have to be.
Maybe not Joe, I'm not sure.
I feel comfortable in saying that this board and this staff has, I hope, has sent the message loud and clear that we will enforce our laws.
Good.
Further comments? Just before we move to the vote, I mean, again, it was a very nice job, but I also want to commend the trustees. There was a time in which there was quite a chasm, and I commend all of you on your open-mindedness and your willingness to work together to forge this compromise. It's the, it's the way, it's the way government should work, and I think it's, it was a job well done by everyone. And I'm especially glad, not only of the substantive integrity, and I think one of the advantages, I, I appreciate the five pages to 42 pages, but I think one of the advantages of something like that is that now our businesses, both existing and prospective, have very clear guidance. And from an organizational standpoint, one of the best things I think we've done is we have, we now have the administrative review and permitting of signs, instead of the lengthy process of going through planning and zoning, which really furthers the pro-business, welcome-to-riverside attitude that I think this board has stood for, for the last two years.
I agree with you. I just don't want our ordinance to be thicker than the city of Chicago.
I don't think you have to worry about that.
And it is, and it is lengthier. I mean, go look at the city of Chicago sign ordinance. It's several pages, and it's pretty clean-cut, and it's got the things that...
There can sometimes be devil indiscretions.
You also have to go look at the city of Chicago's signs.
Okay, so with that, anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Yes, aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine?
No, for the left side of the board. Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Pollock?
Doug, you ready for this? Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll vote it.
We have no considerations. Does anyone have any new business this evening? We do have a need for an executive session to review closed session minutes, so I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the executive session, not to reconvene. No further action, final action will be taken in executive session.
No, I want this to go on, so I'm not going to move.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll be responsible for your advice.
Motion by Mr. Pollock.
Second by second.
Mr. Pollak, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?